Good evening and welcome to the February 13th meeting of the Chapco Central School District Board of Education. We've been in executive session since six o'clock seeking legal advice. Do I have a motion to bring it back to public session?
I'll move. Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Can we please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jane Shepherdson?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. It's nice to have a big crowd here. Thank you to our students. I just have a couple things to talk about. On our calendar, it says our next board meeting is going to be next, it's going to be in two weeks on the 13th of March. We're going to move back to the 11th of March. Christine Ackerman cannot be at the meeting on the 13th, so we're going to move, address that, so we'll take that up.
Can I just, can I share, I have a fellowship I need to participate in in Washington DC with the Department of Education. I just didn't want people to think I was taking a vacation. So, I'm being in Washington working, so I appreciate moving the meeting to accommodate that. Thank you very much.
And because of that, I know next year, or at the end of this year, there'll be two board seats open, and the PTA is holding a Do You Want to Be a Board Member discussion. That was supposed to be, that was announced to be on Monday, March 13th, so that's going to be changed.
March 11th.
Monday, March 11th, that's going to be changed, excuse me, either the 12th or 13th. And they'll get back to you on that. The other thing is Jeffrey's not here. He had a previous engagement regarding board business. And the last thing is that Vicki asked me if she could talk about some West.
Oh, are we doing that before?
Yeah. It's going to be a while, or?
Okay, so I better move.
It'll be quick or not?
I'll make it quick.
Okay.
So, every year, the New York State School Boards Association holds a conference in Albany so that we can lobby our legislators to get proper state aid for our schools and so that the policies that they set don't send us going in all different directions. So, this year, the Capital Conference was this past Sunday and Monday. I attended, and just to give you a rundown of everything very quickly, so the governor in his executive budget proposal proposed $1 billion in state aid increase for this next school year and $250 million in foundation aid, whereas all of the school-based organizations like the Educational Conference Board, the Regents, New York State School Boards Association recommended double that amount just to continue current state programs. The recommendation was $2.2 billion with $1.3 million in foundation aid. So, in essence, all school districts in New York State are behind in the foundation aid formula by about $4 billion. The districts in our area would be getting a 0.25% increase, which is very, very minimal. So, what usually happens is that after the governor's proposal, you have the two chambers, the Assembly and the Senate come out with their proposals. Usually, the Assembly goes way up high, the Senate is somewhere in the middle, so they come out in the middle. This year, the balance has changed in the state senate, so we don't really know what will happen. Also, the proposal was to decrease expense-based aid. I'm not going to go into it too much, but all 11 categories of expense-based aid was reduced to just one category of all services aid, and that would cause significant problems for us. Also, there's a proposal to decrease building aid, which would also cause significant problems, especially with school safety being an issue in this, in this country. To decrease building aid, which would accommodate all kinds of security measures, is problematic. We talked about the regional cost index. Oh, and by the way, you know, the Capital Conference involves going to the legislators and talking to all of them about these issues. Westchester is grouped with the entire Hudson Valley, all the way up to Sullivan County, when the state calculates our expenses in terms of regional costs. We should really be grouped with New York and Long Island. So, districts in Westchester lose a significant amount of money because this cost index is used to factor all kinds of different aids to school districts. So, we've asked them to be grouped with Long Island and New York City.
And we've been doing that for years.
To be equitable, to be fair. And moreover, the foundation aid formula is using old data, 2006 data, instead of current data, so we're way behind.
Is there any, have they made any changes? Are they going to look at changes?
They know, they know at this point, and you know, they say, yes, we're going to do it, and it never happens. But, you know, I'm just here to report what the issues are. Let's see. One of the requests was to have a TTR retirement fund, just like the ERS, to have a TRS reserve. People do want that. Tax levy limit is to be made, probably made permanent, but we requested that they look into that to have some modifications to avoid negative tax, negative tax levies, for instance, or to make an override of the levy 50% majority. And the other issue was to examine school districts as polling places. We feel this is a security issue, and all other municipalities have the option, oh, here's Jeff, okay, they have the option of working with the, with the election board to change, to change a location if it's not convenient, so that was another issue. So, we'll see what happens at the end. Let's see. And, you know, I will continue to report, and we'll continue to find out what, what the negotiations yield at the end of the day. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeffrey, we don't think you're coming. I'm in your seat.
My seat is where my name is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Vicki.
Okay. So, I'd like to begin by sharing that I'm pleased to introduce our Bell students today to the Board of Education, who will be presenting with Dr. Fitzgerald and our faculty, different ways that our middle school has supported social-emotional learning this year. So, Dr. Fitzgerald.
Great.
Get away.
All right. Happy to be here tonight, and I certainly want to thank the Board for the opportunity to do this presentation. I see a lot of our parents in the audience, so welcome too. And of course, the students are here, and a warm welcome to them. I'd like to think, and hopefully you'll see some evidence this evening, that we've had a long and strong and fairly intimate relationship with social-emotional learning at the school. And captured very much in our program to support respect, empathy, self-regulation, perseverance, are the Bell Four Core, our brand. We have always viewed social-emotional learning as a critical element to all learning, be that academic, be that working with your peers, and be that also in terms of trying and aspiring to having a climate at the school that's open and welcoming, and that's always a work in progress. But tonight, my co-presenters are students, and this series is about students, so while I will have a few slides that I will speak to, I'm looking forward to handing it over to our students in a short few moments. And again, I want to thank parents for helping us this evening and bringing the kids here tonight. But we're going to begin with a poem, and so I'd like to invite one of our grade eight students to the mic, and she's going to recite a poem, and we'll create the context after that.
Try on their shoes and tie the laces. Walk a mile to all those places. When you guys have a miscommunication, solve it using your imagination. You can always start anew, but remember the feeling of their shoe. Speaking to someone with great respect may have a greater effect than making their day or having them crack a smile. It will make them happy for a while. Listen, regard, honor, and praise. Give them attention more than a gaze. Take care of yourself using self-regulation. Do the language homework, don't use a Google translation. Organize yourself and manage your time. There are oceans to swim and mountains to climb. It doesn't take much to guide yourself. If you do, you'll have great emotional health. Work hard if the goal is clear. You can achieve it if you just persevere. Persist at even the hardest thing. To be a dancer, dance. A singer, sing. Ace the test, you can do it. The homework packet, you'll get through it. With empathy, respect, self-regulation, and perseverance, you'll succeed. Whenever you get a chance to, do that good deed. Remember the Bell Four Core each and every day, so that you and your peers will find your way.
So, Hudson didn't really get an opportunity to think about this next question, other than about 10 minutes ago. But Hudson, can you talk a little bit about that poem, and you know, why you wrote that poem, and how that poem came to be?
Well, I submitted it as a part of the Bell Four Core campaign, and I like to like write poems to express ideas and thoughts, so I thought it was a good way to like talk about the Bell Four Core, which a lot of people forget about, to just like enforce it.
Thank you so much, Hudson.
Thank you.
And so, here's the framework for tonight's topics. I'm going to spend a few minutes, and again, I'll be brief, and I do not want to steal the students' thunder, talking a little bit about YSL and a little bit about that campaign that we've been running at the school for a few weeks now. I'll give you an update on that. And then I wanted to connect it to, with social-emotional learning, to the work from New York State and the seven essential elements of highly effective middle schools. That's in its 20th, 25th year, and I just want to show you the coherence with that. And then speaking with, of coherence, connect it with the larger strategic coherence planning that's being done by the district. So, that's the sort of framework. After that, we will hand it over to our diversity club, and after our diversity club, we'll hand it over to our student leadership club. So, that's tonight's agenda. So, I'd like to begin with a few quotes, and this is a quote I lifted from the Center for Creative Leadership. They work with, obviously with leaders, and being generative and out-of-the-box thinking. And so, you can see their quote was, "75% of careers are derailed for reasons related to emotional competencies, including inability to handle interpersonal problems, unsatisfactory team leadership during times of difficulty or conflict, or inability to adapt to change or illicit trust." Daniel Goldman left us with this quote, and Daniel was, you know, famous for a book he wrote in the 90s, mid-90s, on emotional intelligence, and he sort of led the way around this whole concept, and much of what he wrote then is relevant now. And he wrote, "If your emotional abilities aren't in hand, if you don't have self-awareness, if you're not able to manage your distressing emotions, if you can't have empathy and have effective relationships, then no matter how smart you are, you're not going to get very far." And if you see his book, he's, chapters have titles such as Emotional Hijacking, Knowing Thyself, Emotion Illiteracy and Its Costs, and How to School the Emotions. So, again, it was a 1995 work, nearly, what's that, 25 years ago, but still relevant and still making the circuit. And last on the quotes is one from David Caruso. That's not the actor, David Caruso, but rather, he must know Mark Brackett of Ruler, because he's at Yale, but he comes from the management side of things, and he does a lot of work with managers and creative managing and evoc, executive coaching. And as you can see there, he says, "It is very important to understand that emotional intelligence is not the opposite of intelligence. It's not the triumph of heart over head, it's the unique intersection of both." And he actually, working with a gentleman by the name of Peter Salavi, has designed an assessment and a scale for emotional intelligence, so they use that as part of their work and their training. Some research, just three that I selected, and you can see them there. First is sponsored by Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, and just speaking to the long-term effects of having good social-emotional intelligence. And actually, they even, I don't know how they did this, but they even figured it out in terms of dollars and cents, if you looked at a student to their early adulthood, to their late adulthood journeys. So, I'm not intimately familiar with the research itself, but it stands well, and it was well-funded. Second speaks to mindfulness, and the early studies around that show to be positive in terms of intervention with anxiety. Some early work on that is proving very positive. And they also believe it may be able to help support attention, so there'll be interesting work that they'll do around that, specifically around attention, students with attention challenges. And then the last piece I put up was because I saw Dweck C. at the beginning, and if you know anything about Carol Dweck, she's done a lot of work around mindset, and so she carries a lot of weight and has a gravitas in the area, so she talks about tenacity and mindsets and work like that. There is a lot of research, I just cherry picked one or two. New York State has long supported middle schools, and there's a New York State Middle Schools Association, and they have seven essential elements for highly effective middle schools. The others include things like guidance, advisory programs, a rich core and a rich encore program, teaming, most of what we have at our middle schools. So, we consider ourselves to have met the criteria for highly effective middle schools, and then we try and execute on that every day. But I wanted you to see number three and number six, and how they do reference social-emotional learning, because number three is an organization and structure that support both academic excellence and personal development. And number six is network of academic and personal support for all students, so there isn't a separation. And I think this is my final slide, and this is our strategic coherence planning. This came, is in second year, Christine brought that on board here, working with Jonathan Costa, and this was a year of work in which the following three attributes emerged, perseverance, self-directed, and ethical. And you can see embedded there are some of our Bell Four Core, respect is there, you see respectful under ethical, you see empathetic under ethical, and self-regulation is in there in terms of identifying goals, being an initiator, planning and purpose, and empathy is there, and perseverance is obviously a title. So, the Bell Four Core was a good precursor to this work, and I'm happy to see that the community is very much wanting this work. And as we get ready to move into Ruler, which should be the next iteration of the Bell Four Core, and actually, Bell Four Core will help us with a foundation for that, and this work too, I think we're very well-positioned at Bell Middle School to move forward. And so, with that said, I'd like to introduce our diversity club. It's in its, it's really still in its first year. We're just getting ready to move into second year. We began this club last year, and I'm looking forward to handing it over now to the members of that club, our students and their club leaders, Amanda and Caitlin.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Amanda McDonough.
I'm Caitlin Murphy.
Caitlin Murphy. We are, yes, we began in January of last year, so we are just entering our second year. And it's been a really exciting journey, for sure. Some of our students and members have gone on to Greeley. We've got a couple long-termers here, but we represent fifth through eighth. We have members of all grade levels, which has been really exciting. And I want to take a quick moment and have them introduce themselves, if that's okay.
I'm Ichee Neneka.
I'm Ailwetow.
I'm Lucy Johnson.
I'm Ella Colvin.
I'm Audrey Johnson.
I'm Emma Ramirez.
And these are most of our group members. As a group, we have a purpose to promote a safe space in school where the students feel that they can explore and talk about different perspectives and be surrounded by people of different experiences, such as race, gender, ethnicity, and other topics, so that we can open these lines of communication, so they feel that there is a place where they can explore and ask questions that they don't know where to go for the answer. As advisors, we also have a goal to help the students feel empowered as leaders in this context, so that they can continue then to be leaders in this school, and so that they can expand their audience outside of just Diversity Club.
So, we've taken two books that have really guided our work. Sarah Ahmed has become really inspirational to us, and she's written one book and co-wrote another, Being the Change, being hers, and Upstanders, being the other. And a lot of our work has come from this, and our activities. One in particular was examining assumptions and stereotypes and how others see you, and we looked at The Bear That Wasn't, a children's book by Frank Taschlin, and had a really great conversation around that. So, this sort of drives our work together.
So, first, we worked on our self-identity. We did this by like exploring our personal culture, experiences, and biases, like when we did the name activity, where we said our name and where it came from, in an attempt to get to know each other better. Next, we worked on our group identity, and we did activities that were specifically designed to help us like understand each other more. And so, like we read stories like The Bear That Wasn't, and we created our logo. It took us a long time to do, but we did it. And then we started setting goals for expanding our audience.
Next, we worked on giving our group a voice. We did this by creating a trailer for Diversity Club to share with our Bell community, and we painted a mural in our school to express our psychop, sorry. Yeah. And then finally, we worked to expand our audience, and we started creating podcasts. Our first one was about bullying and what it means to be a bystander, and that's where we are now.
Ready for the trailer?
No, not yet. We're sticking to the final slide.
Oh, you want to go back?
The mural.
All right, go back to present, sorry.
It's okay.
So, we, the first project that we did as of this school year was we made our mural, because I think this was the project that we used to get to know each other and really start our journey. And so, first, we just started with ideas of what we wanted to be on a mural that we would make, and we watched like a video, and we looked at some pictures from the internet of murals that are in cities around the world. And so, we started with the left picture, which was tape on a wall. And then we got to the painting, the blue things on the back of the background, and then that's when we got to the people, which is kind of hard to see in the light, but there's two people in the top corners.
The people in the faces, they represent all different types of skin and ethnic backgrounds, and how it doesn't define how you are. And you can see, kind of, it's a little blurry, but you can see the lines of different skin color in them, and that was really cool to make. And we also got to read the book, The Skin That You Live In, which is where we also got the quote that's in there from.
And I think that our finished result really reflected what we tried to do, because it had the quote from the Skin You Live In book, which is really the base for this whole project. And then we also wanted to have, instead of just two people, like we traced people's faces. One of them was hers. We didn't just, we didn't just want to have it be the two people, we want to sort of represent everyone. That's what it looks like now, and still.
So, then we went to watch this video to get kind of an idea for the podcast that we wanted to make. So, the video that we watched is a man talking about how he was a bystander and how he witnessed bullying, he witnessed others being bullied, and how he regretted being a bystander.
He was being a bystander, which was what our first podcast was about.
Now, this man in the video is a teacher, and he is trying to teach his students what he's learned about bullying and bystanding, and how not to be a bystander.
Sure, so we'll, we're going to share with you, so these three pieces, we looked at Not in Our Town. We also explored what the universe of obligation is, and sort of this idea, and each of the kids did this for themselves. So, who is in their world that they would stand up for? And then we had a really great conversation around how to expand that, and how do we get others to recognize that you have an obligation? And do you have an obligation to strangers if you see something that looks hurtful or doesn't feel right? So, we had a really great conversation, and we're going to share with you the trailer to our first podcast, which we're calling The Bystander, and whether or not we have a responsibility to this, so we'll share this couple-minute podcast, it's just a trailer.
And so, you know, this is our very, very first podcast from Bell Middle School.
Thank you for that.
Is this the premiere of the trailer?
This is the premiere. Actually, there's a lot of premieres tonight, so we let it run, and it's very exciting.
Diversity is acceptance without judgment.
Diversity is equal to unity.
Diversity is diverse.
Diversity is lasting, nor even understanding itself.
Diversity is accepting people's differences.
Diversity Club. Have a voice, make a change.
You know, we have such high expectations for them, to be upstanders, right, to speak out and stand up to hate.
And then we can help them just grow. Yes. Expanding our audience as a club and also as a Bell community.
Well, the first thought that comes to me, like, I've seen people get like racial discrimination, and the first thought that usually comes to me is, I don't know what to do.
Sometimes people could say like sexist, racist, homophobic things, and they don't even know what they're saying, just because they, they didn't mean to like discriminate and didn't mean to be offensive, they just don't know what they're talking.
Yeah, you just follow other people.
People say things and do things because they just don't know enough.
I literally just put literally anyone I know.
If you're in that kind of situation, and you don't really know that person, I would feel a little bit guilty, because you feel like you should help them, but you don't know like what their story is.
I think that people are like scared to also help other people out, because they don't want to like be brought into the situation themselves, but they also want to help the person out too.
I'm always nervous.
Your body language is a great way to just send messages without speaking.
And how do we get the narrative stronger?
And how do we also feel more comfortable sharing that information and even maybe acting on it if we ever needed to?
You always should stand up for them.
It all depends on us, really. It all depends on our choices.
So, we hope you enjoyed that trailer of our first podcast. We're really excited to get our first episode.
So, at this point, we're going to switch out. We're going to invite up our.
You know what we've been doing, just process-wise? We've, once a segment is concluded, the Board has asked questions.
Sounds like a plan.
So, would that be acceptable to the Bell students right now? Because we're going to ask the questions.
So, my first question, I only have maybe two, but is, how do you access the podcast?
Well, so, I think we're actually asking the kids. Yeah.
Because it's great, I think we'd like to hear more of it, so.
So, the question was, how do you access the podcast?
How do you access?
Well, we're thinking of putting it on Bella Vision, which is just the school TV show on Fridays. We're thinking about maybe putting it on the website or Canvas.
Because I think, I think it would be worthwhile to have it for the entire district, not just, don't keep it to yourselves, though.
Well, I think it'll be an interesting conversation in the future for, and I think that's maybe a district-wide conversation about kids' voices, and theoretically, if you go up to iTunes, anybody can make a podcast, you know, yeah.
I can't, but that's.
But on a good one.
I have a question. I can't quite read it, but what is the quote that you chose from The Skin That You Live In?
Does one of the, one of the kids want to answer that?
Yeah, go ahead.
When we stand side by side in these wonderful hues, we all make a beauty so wonderfully true.
Thank you.
Hence the different skin tones.
Is this an all-female club?
Yeah, we're, we're working on the, actually, we have, we have one.
That's where the other face is.
The diversity in gender we're working on.
Just a diversity in male minority.
We had, actually, one of our members was in the mural, one of our male members was in the mural, and I think we can get pretty intimidated as females, so we're, we're going to rope some more in.
How often do you get together as a club, and how do you determine what, what issue you're going to focus on?
How, how often do you get together as a club and how do you determine what, what issue you're going to focus on?
We usually get together every Monday after school from 2:30 to 3:00.
Usually Ms. McDonough and Ms. Murphy have something that's ready for us to talk about. Or if we're like already having a project, like for the mural thing, we would just get straight to painting or like straight to talking.
So I have a question for you. So you talked about the role of the bystander in, in terms of diversity and when you hear someone who says something, maybe that's not right and maybe they didn't mean to because they don't understand something. But what if it's not a bystander situation? So someone might say something that could be sexist, racist, or homophobic, but there's not really a person that it's directed at. Right? So you're not really in a bystander situation. But you're, you're listening to someone saying something like that. And from the point of view of diversity, what, what do you think you might do or encourage other people to do?
Go ahead.
Even though it might be hard to say something, you probably should tell them it's not okay to say what they said because it might be offensive or rude to other people.
And I think that we all should try to stand up because I know that's the kind of person that we all thrive to be, that we think that will stand up. But even though it's hard, I think you, we should still need to keep trying even then.
Also, it may be hard to stand up, but if you feel like it's kind of hard to stand up, you should tell, try telling a teacher. And then because like you may be scared to tell them off because like they could hurt you or say something about you.
Instead of just going straight to, oh, that's wrong, you shouldn't say that. Maybe you should question them because they might not know what they're doing. I, I think I mentioned this in the video, but in, in the podcast. But sometimes people say things and they don't even want to be offensive. They're, they just don't know any better. So maybe you should talk to them and say, oh, why, why did you say this? And maybe try to change their point of view.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I just, before we transition, two things. First of all, Hudson, we're before, what a beautiful poem that you read. I cannot wait to see what you do when you get to Greeley. I mean, that was amazing. So I just want to congratulate you and your mom for that. That was just tremendous. To be a part of an organization or to establish an organization that, whose focus is appreciation for diversity and acceptance is such a tremendous value to our entire educational community. So I just want to acknowledge your advisors and all of you for being the pioneers for Bell in this very important era. And your podcast, as you listen to it, was so deeply meaningful. The things that you were saying and the way that you were advocating for yourselves and for other kids. I mean, I just, I'm so very proud of you. So I just want to congratulate you for that. So I know we're going to transition on, but I, I did want to take a moment and acknowledge that before we move to the next segment. So thank you.
And there is one other thing. I felt that this club went rogue on us. And by that, I mean, you will see when the Student Leadership Council comes up, we had designed shirts. They put it all together. I approached the Diversity Club with the excited wearing of that shirt last Friday to get a less than enthusiastic response because they designed their own. So now we have, as you can tell, Diversity Club shirts and we have Leadership Council and we are just happy. So it's all great. So thank you so much.
Hello, we are the Bell School Student Leadership Council. Our council has eight members, two elected representatives from each grade.
We work together during our weekly meetings in our daily homeroom to strengthen school spirit and to engage, no, and to give back to our community.
We boost morale in our school through recognition of our classmates on their birthdays by delivering beaded necklaces to them in their homes.
We've collected candy for our servicemen and women overseas and teamed up with the PTA to facilitate a toy drive for the holidays.
This week, we are holding a coat drive and we will host a canned food drive later in the year as well. Thanks to a friendly competition among our social studies teachers, we usually collect almost a ton of food for Feeding Westchester.
Recently, Dr. Fitzgerald asked us how the values of the Bell Four Core have affected our lives as Bell students.
We hope you will enjoy this short video we have created to highlight how the Bell Four Core has become an important part of our experience at Bell.
Bell Four Core are rules that we must follow in order to create a peaceful and helpful learning environment.
Four Core made to me that they are very important words that we should follow. They are self-regulation, perseverance, empathy, and respect. They are all very important and we should all follow them.
How do you promote the Bell Four Core?
I respect people around me and my friends and everyone around me. And I persevere with my homework and just in general.
What does the Bell Four Core mean to you?
The Bell Four Core means to me, I guess, things that, qualities that people should have, especially in our community and our school. And more specifically, to me, it means being respectful to everyone and kind to everyone. It's just four qualities that if everyone follows can make this community a better place.
Putting yourself in somebody else's shoes.
Just being a very nice person and understanding how people feel about a certain situation and dealing with it.
Helping people if they feel sad and feeling their emotions with them.
Respect is being nice to teachers and kids and not doing a wrong thing and do the right thing even when no one's looking.
What does respect mean to you?
Respect means to me about like helping others and saying please thank you and just being a kind person overall.
Self-regulation means not being impulsive and also making sure I do not do anything without thinking first.
Self-regulation means that to do the right thing when no one's looking and to don't talk when the teacher's talking.
Thank you. Means to me getting to class on time, doing my homework and having responsibility.
Regulation means to me staying on task and keeping focused. Like if your teacher's talking, you should listen to them, not get sidetracked. And if you're doing work, you should stay focused. Thank you.
Talia, what does perseverance mean to you?
Perseverance means to me, keep trying your hardest and never giving up.
Can you give me an example of that?
Yes. So last year, I wasn't really good at division and my fourth grade teacher, she kept helping me and keep trying to be really good at that. And I kept trying at my house to reach that goal. Now the vision for me is really easy.
Thank you. What does perseverance mean to you?
Perseverance means to me, being kind, being respectful, and never giving up. Thank you.
Myself in the back and Meredith Justin Olive and Meredith were the advisors for the Student Leadership Council. We try to keep this as student-generated as possible, as you can see. Also that we have an outstanding core group of leaders here that go out into the school and really set a tone for everybody in terms of promoting social emotional growth and learning. And these videos, these interviews were completely generated by them. They put it together. We gave them a general guideline and Dr. Fitzgerald gave them a general guideline and they carried it out. They put together a great product. They work with Meredith every day in homeroom. And we meet one, one day a week for about a half hour on Wednesdays. And then every once in a while during advisory program, we can meet with them and then talk about some of the things that we've put together. We've done drives for, candy drives for our, our soldiers overseas, toy drives in the holidays. We've promoted, trying to think of anything else. Is anyone else? Coat drive this week. That was on the fly. We do, we work with the PTA closely to promote Spirit Week, to boost morale in the school, really getting involved in it in as many ways as we possibly can.
So that concludes the Student Leadership Council piece. We'll hand it over if there's a couple of questions.
One, you say strengthen school spirit. I think the video shows that you were able to get so many of your fellow students to participate. So that's a great thing because usually people don't want to do that. Second thing is, can you all introduce yourselves?
I'm Lea Shapiro.
I'm Jane Spira.
I'm Freya Rock.
I'm Lily Brown.
I'm Warren Foo.
And I'm Chris Butler.
And the last thing is, I think Dr. Sinan is learning about your, your birthday beads, so.
Very excited about your birthday beads. I plan on wearing them until my birthday.
Thank you very much for being here. Wait, whose birthday is it?
Can you talk to us about the birthday beads? Look again.
Okay, so, so our, three of our grades at school are divided into teams. So like fifth grade, sixth grade, and eighth grade are divided into two teams. Seventh grade is one big team. So for fifth, sixth, and eighth grade, so the president, so two representatives for each grade. So the president of that team would be responsible for giving birthday necklaces out to fellow classmates on their birthdays. And for Team Seven, since which is the seventh grade, it's one big team. So the two presidents would work together, I would assume, to try to deliver that birthday necklace to the classmate who has their birthday on the certain day. Thank you.
And we do it because some people, like they don't get their lockers wrapped and they don't really get a big birth, like happy birthday. So we do it as a way to include everyone in the Bell community.
How do you handle the kids whose birthdays are over the summer?
You can either have two options. Either you'll calculate their half birthday and give it to them. Or some people, they tend to do it on the last day of school and they'll go around to each classroom with a bunch of necklaces and ask whose birthday is over the summer.
I don't really have any questions. I just want to say you're doing a fabulous job, you and, and the other team that came up. And I, I just know it's going to make a tremendous difference to all the students in the school. So I really commend you and congratulate you and thank you for coming here to talk to us about it.
Thank you.
I was so impressed with that video. That was great. Did you use our, we had new equipment?
Yeah, well, on the podcast, we should give a shout out to the CSF, yes? We've got some grant monies from Chapco School Foundation. We actually have a very sophisticated, and we're just learning that. This was also true of Bella Vision a few years ago. And then in terms of the video?
I'm moving.
Just phones and I'm--
That's great.
Special lunch permission to use their phone.
Yeah.
We're piloting the grant stuff now.
Right. So we're at the, you know, we're just on the beginning of the work. Also, I don't want to be remiss and to thank our PTA for sponsoring the student t-shirts. And we do plan, I hadn't mentioned and I'll conclude in this, we've been running a campaign for about four to five weeks now called the Campaign for the Four Core. And students submit materials either via Canvas, which is our in-house learning management system, or old school, as I call it. They deliver stuff to my office. And today was the final date. Although if there are, if you're watching TV, kids, you can bring in some more stuff. But I have plenty of items. We'll put up a large display in, towards the end of the month. And I'm so impressed with what has come in. I don't know where the kids get their creativity from and, and the time to do it, but it's been very impressive. But the PTA, as I said, did sponsor our shirts, but those shirts are student-designed. And we hope to be able to give shirts to students as a small token of our appreciation if you participate in the Campaign for the Four Core.
I think that's probably why they're so stylish.
Yes, they are.
And I also would just like to extend my appreciation for really looking at the other side of the report card. Here in Chapco, while we're very focused on academic performance, but we need to be equally focused on cultivating really strong citizens. So that side of the report card is getting more and more attention and I think it's very important. So I appreciate Bell Middle School for really using that as the focus of their presentation tonight. So thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you for solving the mystery of what my son made and left on the couch the other day. Now I know what he was doing. Yes.
All right, well, have him bring it in and we're all set. Okay.
So, excuse me, I was requested, we'll take a 10, 15 minute break, but we have a motion to go to executive session.
For?
Yes, the purpose of legal discussion.
Purpose of discussing litigation.
Litigation.
Okay, so, so--
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
So we'll resume at about 20 of quarter of nine. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Nicely done.
Welcome back. We've been in executive session since 8:30, discussing litigation. Do I have a motion to bring us back to public session? Sure. I agree we bring us back to the public session. Second.
I'll second.
One in favor?
Okay, so under the superintendent's report, you'll see that we have the calendar up for adoption for 2019, 2020. So I'd like to recommend it to you, but I also want to share that there's been some recent communications coming from state ed that are somewhat confusion, confusing about the half days. So we're waiting for clarity, but I'd like to go ahead and, and adopt the calendar as it's presented because I know that--
If we wait for clarity from state ed, we'll be here a long time.
Exactly. So I might need to make some adjustments to the half days, but I know it's important for people in planning their, their time off that they know the, the full day vacation. So I'd like to move ahead, but just know we might have to revisit this again.
We made some adjustments already, haven't we?
No, I didn't, I didn't have to make any. Yeah, because it was just as clear as mud. So I did. As written.
So do I have a motion to accept the superintendent's report 1.2.1 to, to adopt the school, the calendar for school year 2019, 2020?
I move.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
So you just have three other things. Our strategic coherence planning meeting with Jonathan Kostas scheduled for February 26th. This is to broaden update and receive some feedback from our, our committee on our progress as we continue to address our target areas. And I'll present at a future board meeting to the community an update on, on everything that we've been doing over the course of this year to address some of the areas that we, we collectively decided we needed to focus on.
Have we changed the March 13th appointment to a different-- Yes. I discussed that before you walked in, Jeffrey.
So it'd be in March--
It's going to be on March 11th, Monday. Because it seems like that's when, I mean, a couple of us had Monday and Tuesday, I think. You had Monday, so we're going to go Monday.
So what I'll do on the 6th, we'll change it on the calendar, but then on the 6th, I'll have you adopt the, we have to change, you have to adopt it. But we'll change it on the calendar now in advance. So we had our first long-term safety task force meeting last week at Greeley. So in addition, I just want to mention to analyzing our physical safety across the district, we're also reviewing the recommendations made by Interactive last May. And we plan on, still plan on presenting our recommendations to the board in May or June of this year. And then finally, I just want to remind everyone, since we don't have a meeting between now and then, that a ribbon cutting ceremony for the new fitness center is scheduled for Wednesday, February 27th at 3:00 p.m. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Committee reports. Facilities report. First, thank you, John. Second, there's been in the news lately, some issues with Con Ed and--
First, thank you, John. Second, there's been in the news lately, some issues with Con Ed and the moratorium on new gas hookups and whether or not there'll be enough natural gas to be able to supply to actually current users as well as future users. Thank you to John and Christine and Joe who did a little research. First, we don't believe we're affected immediately. We had the, we had a big hookup put in at the front of the building, at the front of the entrance to the high school about, over the last summer, and that's up and running. The gas hookup for, all the Greeley Boileries have been switched to gas already, so we are not, we're not subject to this. And it also means, with all the gas hookups to the boilers, it also means that the second energy performance contract is now completed, which is a big milestone. It's been a, really reached a lot of different things, both financial and green efficiencies and all that. So we're all happy that we've completed the second energy performance contract. If you recall, that's being paid for by the savings that we generate through the changes we made. The middle school, there's an issue with the contractor who is unable to perform under the contract. I'm not sure unable on the, either way. The bonding company, every contractor that we use, anybody who wins a, an RFP has to be bonded. There's a bonding company. Bondex. Creative name for the bonding company. Bondex has taken over and we're negotiating with them. David, our attorney, David Shaw, is working on a takeover agreement. We do not believe it's going to have any material effect on either the scope of the work or the timing of completion. Although for every week that it tracks on, to have an agreement, I guess it's, it risks the time a little bit. But that's going on, we believe this might actually be a plus overall.
Can I make a point about that, that we learned maybe it would be helpful for people to know that this is the general contractor on the project and the subcontractors are staying, the people who are actually doing the work?
That's what we're negotiating for. We don't have a formal agreement, but that, the goal is to have the, actually one of the subcontractors take over as a GC. And the bonding companies were very, I mean, they came to us proactive. They were very good about it, that you recognize their obligation and they're trying to do it as quickly and as efficiently, like obviously for them and for us. And it looks like it's going, it's going to work out. The, oh, we had, the New York Power Authority put out some, I guess their own RFPs to, for geothermal projects and I don't know other school districts in the state. We applied for a couple of schools and got one of them. At Seven Bridges, and the facilities committee will be meeting with the New York Power Authority to get an update regarding the project and particulars of the project and when we can start, et cetera, et cetera. And so we'll be meeting on that shortly. Hold on, that's, how, did I miss anything?
No, I don't have anything to add.
That would be the facilities committee report for February 13th.
No, I think we, we need to get something on the calendar, so we'll, we should.
We should do that.
Do that, so we could have a report shortly in terms of where we are at this point. So we need to schedule something.
Anyone else?
We had a policy.
We're going to do policy.
Policies on the agenda.
That's a little part of the agenda. Okay. At this point, we welcome public comment. In respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion among themselves regarding comments presented. Anyone like to come up and speak? Going once.
What, are you going to say yes?
All right. Let's move on to approvals and radications. May I have, let me take approvals, 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, 3.4.
No, just up to.
I'm sorry, 3.1, 3.2 together. Do I have a motion to accept 3.1, 3.2, minutes of January 23rd and January 25th, special board meeting?
I will move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, 3.3, we have another book for this, our policy. First policy we're going to look at is the district use of credit card, first reading. Christine?
Right, so we've had a couple situations where we've had, we've sent staff to conferences and they didn't accept the purchase order. So the out-of-pocket cost created a hardship for staff members. So I've, I've been in districts where we've had a district credit card that we've been able to use in those circumstances that we've paid for hotels and for registration fees that didn't accept the purchase order, never for travel expenses. And then, I mean, we would use that process so people wouldn't have to pay out of pocket and then be reimbursed because there's lag time in terms of paying out of pocket and, and going through the reimbursement process. So I didn't want to preclude people from attending different professional development opportunities, particularly since often because of where we are in our, in our practices, a lot of the conferences that make sense for our staff to attend are national and they're out of state. So this is just a, a way to be able to leverage another opportunity for people to be able to participate in something that maybe they would not do because they didn't have $2,000 or $3,000 to.
Front.
To support their, their visit. Their conference.
And this is all within budget, so there's no?
This is a first reading too, so we can, you know, edit this or.
Are there any questions regarding this?
I just wanted to know where the $10,000 came from. Is that, are there sometimes, is that like for an individual expense? Or how are you expecting to hit the $10,000 potentially?
Do you want to talk about how we came up with that number?
Yeah, we looked at where, you know, if you have a credit card, you have a rolling balance. And we thought that if you had two or three people going to a conference, there might be some fees that would have to be paid. You'd use that, that would be paid at the end of the month and then you'd have another $10,000. The whole idea was we didn't want to have too large of a credit limit, but.
You want to allow several people to use the card in a particular month?
But only one person is responsible.
Right, which I saw, right.
I just, it wasn't clear if that was intended to be a particular transaction or if that was a cap on any given statement cycle.
That was a cap per statement month.
And, okay.
And then if, you know, if we had, if the conference was $5,500, there are two people going, then we would, then the board would approve that.
Then I would, I may recommend changing spent to referencing the.
Credit limit on the card, perhaps?
Or the balance in any given statement cycle or something to that effect.
Okay.
So anyone else?
That was the, you know, the, the idea of what we're going with that.
Yeah, I would, I would probably just reword it a little because right now it sounds like it could potentially refer to a single transaction.
I think that's true.
But it could be, it's just.
Right, but I, I think what you described was the total expenditure on the card in any given month, so.
Oh, yeah, so we're talking about a $10,000 cap per expense of a balance on the credit card.
Which is a little bit different than just spent, I think. At least to my.
Per pay period.
Prior credit card industry experience.
Okay. And also the district clerk and the assistant superintendent for business are authorized to use the card, so that's two people.
Right.
The way I see it is only the district clerk.
With the prior approval of them. It's the district clerk, it all runs through, so it's a single person, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't want to have this as like, just, you know, like if you work for a corporation, I mean, everyone gets a credit card.
No, I think this makes sense. It's, it's pre-authorized.
It's just easy, try and make things easier.
Easy to keep track of, that's fine.
Also, you don't, the, the credit card doesn't leave the district office.
Right.
That makes a difference.
I think it does.
In my 12, 11 and a half years, this may seem like a mind issue. This is truly, in my mind, the worst idea we've ever had in another half years of being on the board.
I'm sure we have a worse idea.
Establishing a poor credit card, a, a credit card for the district that hasn't come up previously. It is a slippery slope and we're going down a financial thing of, there's no reason for this credit card. Really, there's not. It's, it's convenience and it opens up a Pandora's box of risk that is totally unnecessary. And it's just, it demonstrates to the community that we are free spenders and put on a credit card, don't worry about it. There's other ways to get around it, but it hasn't happened. Joe, do you think this is a good idea?
I think because it's controlled by one person, I think it's workable.
It's workable. That doesn't mean it's a good idea.
Well, all depends where and there's a need, right? I think what, what our experience right now is there may be a need. And therefore, what is the solution if there's, there's a card and it's controlled by one person only and with prior approval by the superintendent or myself, I think that's workable.
Physical possession of this card is irrelevant. When you order something online, it doesn't matter if you have physical possession of the card. So all you need is knowledge of the card number. I mean, physical possession of the card, I mean, if that's what you're relying on as your safeguard, you've missed the 21st century.
No, 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 I don't mean that, but only one person has the information of that card, right?
You're saying the only person who will ever put it into a purchase is the district clerk?
The code in the back of the card, I don't know what that's called, but.
Right, the security code.
The CVV.
And so therefore it would be easy for the district clerk to keep charge, keep track of the charges. So, you know, if it's not a bunch of people using it, you could easily keep track of the charges on the card and check for any fraudulent activity.
Yes.
I mean, that, that should be easy to do. I mean, credit cards are generally good at doing that too.
We can even put a piece in here where the board would get the monthly statement from the credit card if that.
I actually think that's a good idea.
You'd like, I just feel uncomfortable with. Having people within the role of their work pay out of pocket that much money and assume that that's okay. I mean, I already ran into one situation where it created a hardship for someone. So I'm trying to figure out a way to support the professional development that our, our staff wishes to engage in, but also acknowledge that not everyone has expendable cash like that where they can wait for reimbursement process to, to take place.
I, I'm just wondering whether the board receiving the monthly credit card statements is really, goes beyond our, our role.
I mean, we get, we get.
We're going to get in our claims audit reports.
We get claims audit, but we don't get the claims themselves.
No, the reality is that I agree with Vicki. This is really not necessary because the claims auditor will audit that.
Right.
Right. That's why we have a claims auditor. That is beyond the scope of our responsibility.
Well, we've delegated it to the claims auditor.
We delegate all the responsibilities, right.
Is there a way of, of perhaps rewording this to, to indicate that, that this credit card will only be used under certain specific circumstances, when all other like possibilities have been exhausted to pay for it a different way? Like perhaps?
I think it's pretty clear though that it says that it's, it's, it cannot be used when a purchase order can be accepted. I mean, I think that's pretty clear because that's the only circumstances when somebody, and I don't think we should expect people to explain why they can't afford to put it on their credit card.
No, I don't think we need to do that.
I think if, if it's, I think that should be a legitimate request if no purchase order is accepted.
Some people may want to put it on their card in spite of the fact that this opportunity is available because they like to get reimbursed for points or whatever.
Right.
Which is fine. I just want to be able to have a mechanism for people that can't do it to be able to go to conferences without having financial stress placed on their face.
These colleges won't take a check from us?
The hotels often won't and sometime the regist, sometimes the registration won't as well.
Do most people take purchase orders for registrations?
Many do. Not all, but many do.
It says you must submit purchase orders for all of these things where one is accepted.
Right, it says where.
I guess we can make it clear. If it's not clear to someone, then I think we can work on the language to clarify.
Because yes, I wouldn't be comfortable with having people use a district credit card for expenses that we could do a purchase order. I think that's about oversight.
Right, but I also want to share with you, we would not approve a plane ticket. Can't use the purchase, you would need to be reimbursed for that. These would be items that are big ticket items that are out of pocket.
What's the hurdle? When you say big ticket, what does that mean?
I would say that.
Like registration and lodging case?
Registration and lodging. Sometimes they're in upwards of $1,000.
Is it a dollar amount? That's a big ticket or is it just a concept of registration and lodging?
You know, we didn't put a expenditure attached to some kind of hotel nightly rate, so we can do that if that's what the board wishes to do.
I find that as a concept, I think maybe we just need to maybe word it slightly differently.
The second paragraph sort of sets it, right? Only the district can you, with prior approval of the superintendent. So the district clerk can't say, oh, let's just, you know, out and buy something with this or go, go take a trip. The district superintendent or assistant superintendent for business has to reauthorize the credit card.
Jeffrey, I'm just concerned, I know, I, I understand your concern.
I'm going to talk to our auditors about it too. I mean, it's just opening up a can of worms.
But you say, you say that, but I'm wondering where the, if, if it has to be approved by a single person and for only, and it's specified for only a specific type of expense, I'm curious why that would offer up, open up a can of worms if it's very, if the wording is very specific and it's only being used for district-related expenses like that.
But we don't see, I don't see that wording right here.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We may need, we may need to, but it says it's district business-related expenses.
I think it's also sending a signal to the community about the, it's a slippery slope. And there's many things we've been doing lately that we've been sliding down that slope in terms of spending. And I think that this is a mistake to open up a credit card. I just think that it opens up an avenue for fraud. Now, I'm not saying, I'm not saying.
But we're paying for these expenses anyway.
I'm not going to say any of that because I don't, but it just opens up another avenue. And we're sitting here and we're responsible for the fiscal, for the fiscal health of this district. We deal with the auditors all the time and all that, and I just think that this is another area.
Jeffrey, I understand what you're saying.
You look at all the school districts, most, most of these things start out with a credit card.
Yeah, but, but Jeffrey, I understand what you're saying, but the, the point is, the reality of it is, we're paying for those expenses now. You're just talking about the mode of payment.
Right.
So we're paying, I don't know why, it's, it's giving a signal, if we're trying to avoid a hardship for an employee, if it's giving a signal that we're irresponsible when it's oversight and it's the same cost. It's just a different mode of payment and we have claims auditors. So I, I'm trying to understand why you think that's sending a bad signal if the same expenses are being done and we make sure that it's worded so that there is, and there's constant oversight with the claims auditor.
First question I asked was, it's in the budget.
Listen, there's all sorts of things in the criminal code that you're not supposed to do, but people do it, right? And then they get arrested for it. We're just opening up another avenue for fraud. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but it just really, but we're opening up another avenue for it. We're not as fiscally responsible as we've hoped to be.
Well, hold on, Jeffrey. I mean, there's, there's limits to the exposure and liability for fraud if you've taken the right precautions with a credit card. So I guess my.
It's not a credit card. In this case, it's us, we're the ones who, it's the people who are using the card.
There's one person using the card.
If somebody, if somebody in the district, and look at Roslin, okay? If somebody in the district did something wrong, the credit card's not going to reimburse you for somebody else's fraud. They'll reimburse you if somebody took the card and bought a, you know, if I, if I stole the card and started spending it personally, they'll reimburse us. We'll stop it.
You don't look good in orange.
But they're not going to reimburse you for systematic fraud within the district.
If, if we have, I think, the right policy established and the, the right setting for the, for the credit card, I feel like we should be able to protect ourselves from fraud. And I guess maybe that's a question, is, you know, are we writing this policy in a way that?
Can I add two things? I think, I definitely understand where Jeffrey is coming from because of Roslin. But I think Roslin was a very different case because they, they were issuing credit cards like crazy.
Right.
If we have one, and I just wonder because from what I'm hearing right now, maybe we can restrict this to only for conferences and attending. and attending meetings because rather than including purchasing. So.
Right, I was going to say.
We might need to really narrow it down.
You can only go to.
For professional development or conferences or something like that.
Something like that because we probably won't be buying things from, using this credit card. Because so far, we haven't had that need, right?
Fine.
I think what you're saying is, I understand you're saying if the credit card's stolen, then someone could, could buy whatever they want. They can go out and buy.
Up to $10,000.
But we have safeguards right now that the district clerk can't use that card unless it's approved by, I'm assuming people in place now, John or Christine.
Lisa, we trust you.
So, but Warren, we.
But if a teacher goes up to Lisa and says, you know, I need to do this, I need to go to a conference and it's $2,300. Lisa's going to ask John or Christine. She's not going to go, here you go, here's your card.
And I think the expectation is that Lisa's the one who does the actual purchasing.
Right.
That it's not dumping. And your fraud liability, if it's true fraud, is limited to $50. Um, they can, true fraud can't get us for $10,000.
And we're keeping a relatively low limit on a district card like this, so.
So, this is the first reading, so I've got some good feedback from Vicki, Warren and I to go back and rework this and then we can bring it.
That sounds good.
Listen, there's a current policy 6030 that says, "The Chapel Court Board of Education does not authorize the issuance of credit or debit cards to employees or members of the Board of Education." And that was adopted in 2005.
But we're not giving it to employees or the board. We're not doing that.
We're issuing a credit card to the.
Well, it would have to be in someone's name, right?
No, it's a company card, it's a district name.
Yeah, but it's a school district.
It's a reason why we have this policy. Uh, I don't know because I've been on the Board of Local Cal, maybe 2007 or two years after this.
But that's why we're not.
There's no reason to have it at the time.
We're talking about fiscal responsibility, whatever.
But the picture has changed.
Let's see how they can, I'm happy to see how you can reword this.
Yeah.
Mine's still wrong.
Okay.
Okay.
But you know what? I, I'm also concerned about this allegation that we are on a slippery slope and that we have done, taken other action that has, that other actions that have been fiscally irresponsible. But I think if anyone is making a statement like that, that should be justified because I, I really don't believe that's the case at all. And I just, I just want to, to note that before we move on to the next topic.
I'll be happy to, I'll detail, I'll send it to you immediately. Then anybody can foil it.
Thank you. Okay, I don't think something like that should be said without, without justification or backing that up.
I 100% will back that up. Okay.
All right, so, um, policy 7030 are some regulatory changes that we need to embed into our current policy. This is, uh, most of the suggested language deals with vaporizers. So, I don't know if you had a minute to read this, but, uh, most of the language is prescriptive.
I had a question on this. Do we have to make a motion before we start discussing or?
Um, yeah, can I have a motion for item 3.4, policy 730?
You move? Okay, um, I second.
All in favor?
No, no, no.
No, we're not voting. We're just discussing, right?
We're just discussing. We're not voting yet.
We're going to discuss, yeah?
Discuss.
So, I noticed that this is very specific to nicotine-containing products and includes, um, the vaporizers. But should, is, is there somewhere else that's dealing with vaporizers that don't have nicotine? Because I know that some of them are, um, they're still the vaporizers, but they're not nicotine-based. And I would assume that those are also prohibited.
Right, I, I asked that question at the policy meeting, you know, we covered that. And it's, um, talking about nicotine delivery devices and everything that you're talking about is delivered in those devices.
So, it covers everything.
If it's capable of delivering nicotine, then it's prohibited.
Right, the device itself that could deliver other vapors, non-nicotine vapors are also, are called nicotine delivery devices. But I mean, I agree, I agree with what, with, um, what's behind your statement.
And we have other policies.
That we want to cover any vaping device, not limited to nicotine. But what we were told was that, that is what the devices are called.
And we have other policies that discuss, you know, illegal illicit drug use and.
I'm not talking, I'm not even talking about that. I know, just like sometimes it's just like a fruit flavor or something. As long as it's, as long as it's covered, I guess we have other ways of communicating what we need.
It says vaporizers. It does say that.
But when it says, "And other nicotine delivery devices," sometimes it feels like, it sounded to me like it was qualifying it as it had to be.
Vaporizers, that the vaporizers would have to be nicotine-related?
Maybe you could say, "And all other."
Or any other.
Any other or all other.
Or all other nicotine delivery devices.
Yeah, because that would also include like chewing tobacco and stuff, too, right?
Right.
Or it would say, and other, and other, no, it would be, "And nicotine delivery devices, not other."
Right.
Right, but it could be vaporizers, comma, and.
And all.
And all, and all nicotine.
It's the other that sounds like it qualifies it.
So, maybe we could change it to all.
All nicotine delivery devices.
I have one, are you finished, Holly?
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I have one other thing, just that it says also, um, in the fourth paragraph, "In recognition of this, the board will provide support through formal programs and informed example to assist members of the school community in becoming smoke and tobacco-free." I just didn't know what that really entailed on our part.
I think that it means that we would approve any programming if, if necessary.
Right, but then I think we might want to say that, that the board will provide support. That just seemed very kind of amorphous to me.
Financial support?
Yeah, it's just like, I wasn't sure what that really meant.
But does that mean financial support? Are we going to pay for a program to have somebody's stuff?
I don't know.
Um, this is in your current policy, right? Because that's why it's not.
Right, it's not highlighted, but I'm flagging it anyway.
We'll go back and clean that up.
So, what is the answer to that?
Clean the language.
Is there an intention to pay for it or not?
Maybe it means we're providing programming to.
I think it's the programming that takes place in the schools now.
I think so. I just think maybe we should clean up that language. It looks as if we could like pay for a recovery program or something. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that was all I had.
Okay, all right, we'll take that feedback back.
And then we've got, um, item 3.5, Regulation 7000, Schedule 3, the Community Use, uh, for District Facilities, 18, 2018, 2019. This is first reading and adoption. So, this is the policy that we had originally discussed with the town. So, we don't have a, um, a contract with them, or I guess it's a contract, to use our facilities. And we, it's under a, a policy, so we as a district have control of how we work with the town. And then we can adjust as necessary without having to go through a legal issue. We received a letter back from the town about two weeks ago.
So, there were no changes other than what's in right here with the town fees?
That's correct. On, I'm not sure which page it is.
It's, uh, the second.
Page, second page under the regulation. Town camp and summer camp, $600 per day per building, inclusive of all costs.
So, just in terms of process, I had, as we had discussed, I would ask the town for a proposal, some structure of payment. Um, they had submitted that. We reviewed it in the policy committee. We felt that that was not, um, acceptable. So, Vicki, John and Warren and I met and we came up with this structure and asked the town if, uh, we presented this to the Board of Education. If you approved it, if this would be something that they felt they could support, which they said that they had. So, tonight we're discussing whether or not the full board agrees with this payment structure for them.
So, if we agree that they're, they're on board with this?
Yeah. We didn't want to present something to you that they wouldn't be on board with.
So, do we need to open discussion or is it open?
It's open.
Okay. Uh, I was wondering, because we're just saying per day, per building, used, inclusive of all costs. I was wondering if we should have, how we're defining a day here in terms of hours. Um, the number of hours, the hours during which we would be open for the, that use. Uh, it just seems as though it could, it could be interpreted widely if, or broadly if they so chose. And they could change things in the future and I'd, I'd like to be prepared for that in the regulation.
We can, we can find out how did they define, because usually they have a start time and end time. But I do understand what you're saying, you know, whether they want to stay that night, too. So, what does that mean?
I just think we should know how, how day is being defined and just be clear.
They usually have a schedule, but I don't know whether they want to be locked into that exact time.
It just could be an up to X hours.
Maybe we can talk about how many hours.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
Right, like the maximum number of hours would be six.
Or we can, yeah, can we?
And then, and then I have a question here. Do we have the, why do we have town, town camp and town summer camps? We're really just dealing with summer camps, right?
Well, that's my question. Does this include like when they have teachers' basketball?
I was just going to ask about that.
What does that include?
It is the two summer camp programs.
Right, so we just, should be town summer camps.
It would not apply to a camp during a holiday break?
No, they go to the other.
Right, so it should say summer camps.
And, and how do we come up with the $600?
That was a negotiation, I guess.
We took the, we look at how many rooms they use and, uh, you know, the duration, how many days. And we, we thought that $600 is probably the right number.
Probably the right number. Was it based on expenses, based on cut and deal?
Past fees and all, past charges and fees.
What were the past fees? Are we going to generate the same amount of fees, more or less?
No, I think this one, they have 29 days and there are two, two buildings. So, it's 58.
Well, 30 days is, uh, 1856 minus 1,200 is.
I think 30 some thousand, right?
Who's?
I don't have it. I'm calculating it.
I believe it's 36,000.
Somewhere around there.
And what do we, what do we generate revenues for the last year or two? What do we charge in previous?
Well, that was all-inclusive in the $85,000 package. Okay, so this is only part of it and this is just the summertime. And they have other camps that we would charge separately. And then, uh, we have the five families that they pay, they're going to be paying separately. So, it's very difficult to compare because we're talking about apples and oranges.
Okay, then I'm looking, forget about what they've paid us, but as our total, and I don't know if it's relevant to this, but as our total.
I'm just calculating the money, okay? So. So, we're talking about 30,000, $34,800. That, that's how many days they will have, 29 days.
But they, the letter that Jill wrote us, um, the town board has given authorization to move ahead for the use of both schools for our summer camp program, $600 for each building per day for six weeks for a total charge of $36,000 all-inclusive.
Actually, actually, it is not 36 because there's a July 4th.
Right, so, I, I think we don't want to go to 36,000. We want to do $600 per day because maybe next year they'll use it for 35 days, not 29 days.
Well, right, so anyways, $600.
Yeah, ideally $600 per day for building. I believe that's. And could you remind me how much we're taking in from the youth sports groups?
We're estimating about $45,000, estimating. Right now, we really don't know.
And as this is our policy, we can adjust this as necessary. We're not in a contract, a three-year or an evergreen contract with the town where it keeps going on and on. We can, we as a board can adjust the prices as we need to. Right, but the only way to adjust the price is to know if we're covering our expenses. And that's what I'm asking, is how we came up with $600. How do we know we're covering our expenses? I mean, our goal was not to make money.
So, so we really look at this, you know, our other charges, we use, look at the rooms they use and the time they use. Then we come up with the $600.
So, we believe it's going to break even in terms of our expenses.
So, do we need to adopt this with the amended?
What I'd like you to consider doing tonight, so they can start to move forward in terms of planning, is to waive the second reading and adopt it and take out the town summer camp.
Just call it town summer camp.
Right, and then if we need to come back and add the hours, we can do that at a later meeting.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
I'll, I'll find out the hours.
So, do I, can I get a motion for item 3.4, Policy, uh, 3.5, Regulation 7000?
Wait, I think we moved already?
We moved already?
Did we? To have a discussion? We just have the discussion.
So, can I get a motion, uh, on 3.5 Regulation 7000? We're moving to waive the first, second reading or we're moving to approve the whole thing? I think we do it at the same time.
Waive the second reading and adopt it with, as amended.
This is actually a regulation. You don't really have to have a second reading. This is not a policy. Because in the past, when we, we approved the costs, it's always one, one time.
Um, Margot wanted us to have a second reading because we were, wanted us to waive the second reading because of the nature of the regulation.
Okay, so can I get a motion for item 3.5 Regulation 7000 to waive the first, waive the second reading and approve as amended to take the town summer camps home? $600 per day per building.
Okay, I'm so moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, present 4.1 Instructional as presented.
I will accept the Superman Tennis Recommendation, item 4.1 as presented. I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend 4.2 Non-Instructional as presented.
I will also move item 4.3 Superman Tennis Recommendation, not, non-educational personnel or others. I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, can I get recommend, can I get a motion for item 5.1 CSE summaries?
I'll move item 5.1.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to take item, uh, 5.2. Can we get a motion? Be resolved, Board of Education approves a contract for health, welfare services with Yorktown Central School District for three students at a rate of $1,206, $1,206.60 per student for the 18, 19 school year, authorizes presidents and superintendent and district clerk to execute the contract.
I move 5.2.
I'll second 5.2. Any discussion? All in favor? I'd like to take, um, item 3, 5.3 and 5.4 together. Appointing Nicole Mangieri as Title IX, Title VII, Title VI, Compliance Officer and DASSA Coordinator for, um, Seven Bridges Middle School for the 18, 19 school year.
I'll move 5.3 and 5.4.
Do I have a second?
Second, I just wanted to point out that in 5.4, it, um, has coordinator as plural.
Plural, I know.
Just to be clear that there's one.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 5.5, be resolved, Board of Education authorizes refund and credit basic star for parcel 92.6-2-13 in the amount of $1,841 to tax, school, school tax year 2018-19. I will move 5.5.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
5.6, be resolved, Board of Education approves a contract with Pleasantville Union Free School District for special education services for one student, ID 603055. During the 2018-2019 school year in the amount of $44,028.77 authorized superintendent execute disagreement. I will move 5.6.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
5.7, be resolved, Board of Education approves a contract with the East Chester Union Free School District for special education services for one student, ID 20602275. During 2018-2019 school year in the amount of $64,446 authorized Board President, Board District Clerk to execute disagreement.
I move five point seven.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five point eight, be resolved, Board of Education approves an agreement with KGND Architects dated February fourth, twenty nineteen, in the amount of five thousand dollars for architectural, architectural professional services for an ECO lab slash greenhouse project with Harpsburg High School, and authorizes board president to execute this agreement. I, I, I will move five point eight.
I'll second.
Discussion. Um, we, oh, sorry, we met, um, I don't know what day it was, but it was about minus twenty-eight degrees, it was very cold.
Yes, it was February fourth.
And, uh, I'm sure it was February fourth, but, uh, we, um, looked at different areas where we might be able to consider putting an ECO lab in, so everything's going towards steam and, and engineering and math and arts and sciences, which is great, but the idea of having an outdoor area or an area where we can look at other parts of our curriculum, something that I think we can do, and we can get in, um, some of the groups to help us on these type of things, so it's just an idea that we've been floated around, just thinking.
Yes, I think, um, we're in this exploratory phase, and we need some, um, architectural support to determine how to move forward at this point.
Also, I just want to add one thing, is that we actually heard, heard back from SCD, I think you remember that day when we went to visit the site, there was a question raised by the architect, whether or not, uh, we can actually build a building in the middle of the courtyard, because last time around we had some problems, and we heard back from the director, and she said, "It is okay, however, it cannot be connected to the covered, um, walk, walkway," so I think, is, the first step is good, so, so, you know, architect has to work on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five point nine, be resolved, Board of Education approves a budget transfer in the amount of three hundred and eighty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents for payment to select telecom incorporated for the paging project in all six school buildings, which was approved at the January twenty-third, twenty nineteen, Board of Education meeting, authorizes the board president, board president to execute this transfer. I will move five point nine.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay, that was, we, we approved this last time we, uh, paid the bill, um, now I guess we just move in one, from one, one budget line to another. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five point one oh, be resolved, Board of Education approves a budget transfer in the amount of one million eight hundred forty-eight thousand five, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents for payments of debt service for the twenty-six million five hundred thousand dollar capital bond closed on June eighteenth, twenty eighteen, authorizes board president to execute this transfer.
I'll move five point one zero.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Um, this lists all these transfer account codes, um, what are all these A, two thousand range?
All the two thousand codes are from instruction.
Instruction?
Instruction, sorry.
Instruction?
Yes.
So we're taking money from Salons, is that what this is?
Wherever we, we, at this point, because it's half a year's past, so wherever we can find money, that's where we're pulling the money from, and the only reason this, this amount was not in the budget was because we didn't really borrow, because you remember when, when we going, that April, May, when we were putting the budget together, we didn't even have approval, but we were afraid that the interest will, will, will come up, so, so we really just pushed it, and we borrowed in June, that's, uh, so that was not in the, um, eighteen, nineteen budget.
So these are, these are instructional personnel that we weren't hiring, or paid less than we thought, or, I don't understand?
It could be retirement, could be various reasons, it may not be just personnel, just, but, but instruction, instruction has a lot of codes, you know, a lot of lines, hundreds of lines, and wherever we, we have money right now, that's where we're pulling the money from, the two thousand codes, and I think we also pull it from the nine thousand codes, that, that's from the benefits.
Is it possible we're going to, in a couple of months, find that we actually needed this, these amounts, that we're transferring?
Will we have to transfer money back?
But, but also in the budget, you know, when we do the budget, we also ha, have funds from the fund balance that we can pull, because that's where, we haven't transferred the money yet, so, so, so we, we have room.
Do you have any estimate, whether or not we're running out of surplus or deficit, or I guess not a deficit, a surplus this year?
I think that's on your seven. It's, you know, seven point two, seven point three.
Uh, hold on. And what's the answer?
We, we have some estimates, but this year is going to be much smaller than last year, the reason is because of, uh, these transfers, but this is still early, uh, this is just February, uh, we, we just did January, right, we just closed January.
Generally, when we say we have a surplus, that comes from, we generally just, we don't allocate as much of the fund balance as we had authorized, is that fair statement?
Mm-hmm, this time we probably will use most of the fund balance that we allocated.
Yes.
This is what I'm saying in the beginning of February.
Clear.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five point one one, be resolved, Board of Education approves a budget transfer in the amount of seventy thousand dollars to cover additional summer security expenses for Harpsburg High School in the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year, and authorizes board, board president to execute this transfer, I'll move five point one one.
I'll second.
Discussion, so.
So this is what, we, we added, uh, some security guards at Greeley, and then also we add a part-time, uh, security supervisor, that's why we're short on that, for that line.
And this is through the end of the school year?
Yes, and, and, and in reality, when you see the budget for next year, you will see that line is going to go up, because that's the money we need.
So we have that money in the budget now to cover this?
Mm-hmm.
We, we have an overall budget that allows us to make this transfer pay.
Right.
There's not, there's not a lie in the budget for now?
No.
That's, that's right, we have a line, but the line is not sufficient, that's why we're moving the money into that line.
So I have a question related to, you know, the previous discussion as well, what, what do you anticipate our unallocated fund balance to be at the end of the year?
That, that's the one, that's the seven point two, seven point three.
Right, so would it still be within the four percent range, or would it be lower this year?
I think we should be, you know, four percent range.
Right, I mean, and legally, we're not allowed to be above that.
Right.
So when we say, you know, we're using up excess funds, you know, we're using up an amount that we would not be able to sustain, to keep there anyway.
I, I think, at, at this point, at this point.
I think it should be clear.
At this point, I think what we'll come out at the end of the year after we close, so, so when we close everything in August, our fund balance, the bottom line should be very similar to what we closed out last, last year.
I think that's the important thing to know.
Yeah, that, that means, you know, it's just probably going to be a wash, it's going to be pretty even.
Okay, yeah.
But it would actually be going up a little bit, because every year our budget's a little more, so you're allowed to keep what, four percent of your budget.
Well, it's a percentage, so we're always at the four percentage mark, which keeps us triple A, triple A rating, and it's our any day fund.
It'll go up a little bit, but it'll be within a, within a legal.
But that, that amount is very small, when you really think about it, because our budget increase is not going to be large, and the four percent of that.
Right, I'm just saying, but it's, it follows that line.
But our, but our total reserves is not, is way more than the four percent of the budget.
That's on.
Many, many, not many, but many other lines of, of.
Yes, because they are designated.
Right, these are, this is unrestricted.
But that's determined by need, so this is, you know, the unallocated is what we're talking about, not, not the whole reserve fund.
Unrestricted fund of assets.
Unrestricted, yes, sorry, yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, five point one two, be resolved, Board of Education approves Chapacore School Foundation Instagram gift for collaborative learning spaces for sixth grade English at Robert E. Bell Middle School in the amount of one thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars submitted by Robert E. Bell Middle School, sixth grade English teacher Dana House, I will move five point one two.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Thank you, CSF.
Thank you, decision.
For the generous gift, all in favor?
Aye.
Five point one three, be resolved, Board of Education approves Chapacore School Foundation Instagram gift for the movable library in the amount of six, twenty-one hundred sixty-six dollars plus shipping, submitted by Douglas Grafflin Elementary School, third grade teacher Warren Whitney.
I will move five point one three.
Second, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I was just wondering about the plus shipping.
Okay.
So the actual amount is going to be higher than what we're discussing.
Well, some, so, you know, I remember this from my years in CSF, sometimes it, it gets altered, and they calculate everything beforehand, but they don't have, based on weight and certain things, so it.
But they're covering this.
But it will, yeah, it will be covering it.
Okay.
So I guess that's why they have to do that.
Thank you, Warren Whitney, for submitting it, and Dana House, all in favor?
Aye.
Five point one four, be resolved, Board of Education approves Chapacore School Foundation Instagram, Instagram gift for twenty nineteen, third grade Shark Tank sensory tools in the amount of two thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy cents, uh, submitted by Douglas Grafflin Elementary School, third grade teachers Maricomin, Lori Endy, Hannah Ottman, and Warren Whitney.
I'll move five point one four.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No, thank you once again, CSF.
Okay, now, for me?
I'll take it.
Oh, right, I'll take it?
Aye.
So we have an addendum, five point one five, um, we received this today, this is be resolved, Board of Education is hereby approve the use agreement between District and Westchester County Center as presented at this meeting, in the event a district team is engaged in section one, twenty nineteen semifinal games of twenty nineteen, uh, and authorizes board president to execute this agreement, do I have a motion, uh, move five point five?
I move five point one five.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, I explained, okay, so, um, in order to use the county center to schedule our postseason play, without knowing if we're the top, uh, the top seed or not, we have to approve the opportunity for us to engage in a contract with them at this meeting, but we won't know if we actually have to engage in that contract until sectional play begins, so I want to be prepared in case we need to actually reserve the county center, so we're making, um, we're going to move forward with approving a contract that we may not actually use.
We're, we're preemptive, preemptive contract.
Yes.
And knowing that our, our boys' basketball team will be successful.
That, yes, or girls, but I do want to say that it all depends on if we're seeded higher than the, who's at the top seed, so I just want to be ready in case we're in a situation.
The home team, which is the higher seed, is host again, so it would be out of class, this is all coming about because section one, out of their wisdom, um, canceled the contract with the county center for both the semifinals and finals after years and years of students wanting to make it to the county center, play in the finals, um, and now, um, instead of playing at tickets purchased for the semifinals, to the section one individual members have agreed, not all, but we have a part of the group ones who agree to host our, if we're the home team, we will host the county center.
So this is great for our, our students and our teams, so.
Let's hope we can sign the contract.
Yes.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Good luck to boys and girls' basketball. Um, be resolved, um, that the Board of Education acknowledges change orders approved by Superintendent for Board Resolution adopted June fourteenth, twenty seventeen, Board of Education meeting, do I have a motion that we acknowledge the change orders from Dr. Ackerman, six point one, six point two, six point three, six point four, six point five, six point six, and six point seven?
I move, I'm six, and closer.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm glad I finally got that, what in the heck? Um, I, uh, can we take items seven point one, two, and three together, Treasury report,